Good evening. I'd like to call this February 1st regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Frierson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three is Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
(Inaudible). (Inaudible). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bremner. Pastor Dave Adams from New Song Ministries is going to offer our prayer this evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hey, good to see you. Happy New Year to you.
Thank you for letting us be here. Father and Son, I just thank you so much for just the privilege to be able to stand here right now and that we would call upon you, Lord. We need your wisdom, we need your grace, and we thank you for this great nation. We thank you for this great city, Father. I thank you for this council. Lord, I would just like a prayer, a prayer of blessing over our mayor, Father, that you would just give him wisdom and strength, bless his family, his children, Lord. I pray that you would just bless his home and his health and give him wisdom in difficult days and integrity, fortitude, and strength, Lord. I thank you for this council, Lord. We just pray for them, God. We pray for unity. Lord, I thank you for just everything that they represent. I thank you for their hard work, and we pray that you would just bless them for that labor. Give them strength, give them wisdom and fortitude to press on as well. Lord, I thank you for pushback and for disagreements, Lord, and all of that. Lord, we call upon you and we pray for your wisdom, Lord. We ask for your blessing on this city, Father, for the schools and for the children, for the teachers, Lord, for the business owners. Lord, we ask a blessing on the businesses in this community, Father. And, Lord, you know our struggles more than we do, and we thank you that you know exactly what to do. And so we ask you, Lord, to intervene and to bless this city. Lord, I just thank you so much for all the workers, the city workers, the police, the fire, Lord, that have devoted their lives to the success of this community, and we pray for them. We pray your blessings on them. And, Father, we just pray for the well-being of this city. We pray for safety and health and success, Lord, and we thank you because that's exactly who you are. It's exactly what you want to do. And when we say bring it, Lord, we thank you so much in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Adams. Item number four, agenda changes. Do any of our commissioners have agenda changes?
Mayor, I have one tonight, so that would be number seven, item B. I'd like to ask that we table that until March 1st.
All right.
And that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Can I ask why?
There's just more issues that need to be discussed about it, and so we need a little more time.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? Clerk, call the roll on the motion, or is there a motion to accept the agenda with the corrections?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by McDowell, second by Frierson. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five, citizen comments. Thank you, Chief Burke. Wendy Driver?
Good evening. My name is Wendy Driver. I'm a resident here, and I'm here to ask that you allow the citizens of Zion, the residents, to have backyard chickens. I'm going to pass around a flyer. It's from the Lake County Department where they have all the guidelines set up for having backyard chickens.
Thank you.
Have you ever thought about having chickens in the backyard? I hope you guys have fresh eggs, natural pest control, and then also fertilizer for your garden, all in one with a chicken. There's lots of people that are asking for having chickens in their backyard. Beach Park allows you to have 10 hens. Winter Harbor allows you to have eight. On Wadsworth, it varies depending upon the size of your lot. Chickens, not only do they make the pets, but they do eat a lot of your bugs, so that would help control, you know, the stuff around. I apologize. I looked up here. One of the things with the backyard chickens is that when you look at your guidelines there, it would be about 30 feet away from any structures. I'm only asking for six. I'm not asking for roosters or anything like that. It would be nice to have more, but I understand. I do also happen to have, from the different families, the guidelines that they have proposed for each one, they do ask for registration and an application fee to be able to have backyard chickens, so that we are not just letting them, you know, just be in the backyard roaming all over the place, but that they have a safe room, that they have a proper run size for the amount of chickens that are being asked for. So I will, do you want, I have two sets. I didn't print out everything because it just takes up a lot of my ink. So I will leave these with you guys, but that's all I'm asking.
Okay. If you can just hand them to the clerk, then we will.
Okay, certainly. And what would be needed information or things from me to help with this process?
Well, while we, during citizen comments, while we typically don't answer questions, we take that, but we will talk with our building and property director about these issues, and our commissioner, Jackie Holmes, will bring that, this conversation and issue to Richard Ianson.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I didn't see any other people signed up for, but Mr. Bremner would like to offer some comments?
Mayor McKinney, gentlemen ladies, audible service. I rise before your reception. Thank Director Roberts and his crew for the work Sunday a week ago on the 23rd. I got up to go to Divine Services in Waikiki. Sorry about that, Commissioner. My street, Elam, was plowed out. Sheridan was plowed from side to side, and driving south on Sheridan, it looked like most of our side streets were plowed out. I got to the city line. I don't know if Beach Park even owns a snowplow, but that's a meditorial. Sheridan was one way each direction. I got to Waikiki. A couple of their main streets were being plowed at the time I got there, but none of the side streets been plowed out. By the time Divine Services were finished, looked like they were starting on, but our streets were clear. Again, I thank Director Roberts and his people for getting our streets done, making it a good place to be. I can thank you, sir, for your time, your courtesy. Your question stands out.
Permission granted. Thank you, Mr. Bremner. Item number six, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on January 18th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Holmes, second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries.
Bills, vouchers 139763 through 139865, John and Huntington National Bank. Total
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item seven, discussion authorization approval. 7A, consider approval of waiver of sprinkler system, 1905 Sheridan Road per Chief Street.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Tonight, I'm requesting approval for waiving a sprinkler system requirement following a change of use for 1905 Sheridan Roads. This is in reference to Section 903.6.2, Bullet Point 3 of the 2006 International Fire Code, as amended by Section 34-43 of RCD Code, requiring sprinkler system requirements for expansion, interior alterations, or remodeling of occupancies. Bullet Point 3 states a project that entails a change of use group for any part of the building would kick in a sprinkler system requirement. A little bit of background for this specific situation, this is a former private residence that was purchased by the new owner to operate as an online eBay business. She has made all proper building department required upgrades, will have a monitored fire alarm system in the business, and will have no public customers or foot traffic entering the building. Furthermore, she has supplied the attached notarized affidavit attesting to these details, so I do support waiving the sprinkler system requirement for this specific request. I also wish to point out that it is not my intention that this will become precedential in nature. This is based on the merits of this specific request.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to waive the system requirement for 1905 Sheridan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 7B has been tabled. Item 7C is consider proposal for professional engineering services from Christopher Burke Engineering for TIF 3 District Improvement Project per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. Attached to your packet, you'll find a folder to provide engineering design and preparation for bidding documents for the TIF 3 District Improvement Project. This project consists of construction of the new street, Yale Avenue, located between Sheridan Road and Colgate Avenue. The new street will provide access to city-owned, undeveloped commercial lots along Sheridan Road and Colgate Avenue. Additionally, the proposed project will address upgrading existing water mains, sanitary sewers, storm drainage, and resurfacing streets within the TIF 3 area. Base bid estimate is $2.4 million with an alternate bid estimate of $1.1 million for a whole project of $3.5 million. Staff is recommending and requesting approval of the professional engineering service proposal for Christopher Burke Engineering in the amount of $217,200. Funding for this proposal and the project will be from the TIF 3 area.
Is there a motion to approve the proposal?
I'll move to approve this proposal. Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by McDowell. Questions or comments?
I hate to put you on the spot, City Administrator, but just to explain to the public how we are able to pay for this out of the TIF fund.
Sure. So first, I'd like to add, at the time the memo was submitted, we did not have approval yet from the TIF Board. We had a meeting with the TIF Board last week. They did recommend approval of this as well, so they support this project. But the TIF districts, for those that don't know, are basically designed, they're set boundaries that meet criteria as either dilapidated or lack, trailing behind in market values. The goal is we set up these boundaries to encourage development, whether it's residential, industrial, commercial uses, and increase our overall tax base. So what happens is, at some point in time, in TIF 3, this was about 20 years ago, we freeze the value on those properties within that area. The value continues to go up in that, but what, the tax bill that's collected on that increased value, the portion that was frozen goes to all city services, schools, et cetera, as it did at that time. The increase in taxes due to just general increase in value goes into a pool of funds that have to be reinvested in this area for development, to try and get things up to par. So this TIF is basically entering the end of its life cycle. Typically, TIFs are 23 years, and the goal, we did this with TIF 1 in the central area, but the goal of this TIF as well is that we upgrade all of the infrastructure in that area so that it's current, it meets the needs of any existing commercial business as well as potential future commercial business, so that we can continue to attract business even beyond the expired life of the TIF. If we did the infrastructure at the beginning of the TIF, by the time it was end, that infrastructure would be 23 years old. It would already need to be, it'd be dated, it'd need to be replaced. So it's kind of the last hurrah of the TIF to say, spruce up the area, plan for future development, so that even when the TIF expires and can no longer contribute to supporting that development, it's done its job to make that an attractive area for businesses to operate. So that pot of funds that comes through that allocation of the tax bill is what's accumulated to fund this project.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 7D is consider appointment to Planning and Zoning Commission per Mayor McKinney. We have a candidate that's been interviewed by our Director of Building Property and Zoning, Richard Ianson. Desiree Johnson is a human resources specialist with over 30 years of successful experience in employment and labor relationships with the federal government. Ms. Johnson is currently serving as the branch chief for Branch 1 for the Department of Housing and Urban Development. As part of her bio, she believes in world-class customer service and enjoys taking time to learn and interpret regulations and policies for human resources. She is also a firm believer in the power of positive thinking in the workplace, which helps in her day-to-day interactions. She's a longtime resident of Zion, and when she's not glued to her computer, she loves to spend time reading and being with her grandchildren. She is here this evening. I'd love her to stand up. She doesn't want to speak, but we want to thank you for volunteering your service with all the experience you have, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
All right. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by McDowell, second by Holmes. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Item number eight, departmental commentary. We'll start with Director Roberts this evening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bremner, for your comments. Kind of tagging on my comments for tonight, anyway. There is a possibility in the next couple of days of some snow and ice coming in. I think right now they're looking at maybe four inches tomorrow. Not a heavy one, but we do continue to get phone calls. We're probably do plow. Our policy is posted on the website, but I'd like to kind of just hit a little couple things on that. And our initial plowing events are we go out and we try and open all the primary road. That is our first primary job. We do not salt that much during that. We're just trying to open it up. We may salt intersectional. The thing with salt is, the last few years, the state NIEPA has been trying to get municipalities to dwindle the amount of salt that they use. One reason is because we live right next to the lake, and that salt goes to the lake and pools it. Then we treat it and we sell it back to us. But so once we continue, once we finish up our primaries, then we'll start doing the secondary. Alleys are considered third in that sequence of events. Alleys may not even get hit until the next day or the following day after that. It just depends on how bad the storm is and how long it's taking or how large of a crew we have on site right now. We utilize the water department to plow alleys. However, like tonight, we had two main breaks today. Right before this meeting, I was out there with them. They're just now finishing up the second one. So if they were out to go out to plow, we'd be going in even more overtime. And we don't typically like to plow, put people in vehicles after 14 or 16 hours. It's pretty much mandatory. We'll put them down after that and then come back. We don't have the luxury of the state or the county to have multiple crews. What we have is what we have, so that's how we deal with the storms.
One question, Director Roberts. And I know this issue was brought up to several of the council members via email. The plowing of downtown is done by a community service group?
Oh, you're talking about sidewalks?
Yes.
Yes. We typically have always done that. That's been a courtesy that we even clear sidewalks downtown for the businesses. We do take care of the public parking lots, though. But that has always been accomplished through the community service. The last couple of years with COVID, those numbers have dropped, so it's been a little hit and miss on the amount of people we can put out there. When we just start getting accumulations of large invangements, then we will go out at night. The public works will go out at night and clear all that off and haul it away. But we have to watch when we do that because the Sheridan Road's so busy. That's why we do that in the wee hours. We have to watch the weather because I don't want to put guys on overtime cleaning out piles of snow with snow, snow event coming up. So but we will try and get all the intersections open on the sidewalk. Those are usually the primary on cleaning out.
Absolutely. And my response to this gentleman that sent the email was, it also helps that we try to work closely with the businesses in the downtown area so that they also chip in and help out with our limited crews and do a little shoveling themselves. As you said, this has been a courtesy that the city of Zion has implemented for years in trying to help our businesses continue to attract customers and keep them safe. So thank you, Director Roberts. Chief Street?
Good evening. Again, the only thing I was going to add, kind of along with that, even though it doesn't sound like a ton of snow north for this event, but for the residents and the visitors, if they could also clear the fire hydrants that are in their neighborhoods when we do have more than a few inches, it really helps us out. That's all tonight.
All right. Chief Burke?
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. I guess we'll all talk about weather tonight, but as we do get some rain possibly tonight and maybe some freezing rain, if the snow lands on top of that, it's going to be very slick. So give the public works crews some time to work on that. Drive slower. You don't get there, it doesn't matter, right? So drive slower, take your time, be cautious, and be courteous to other drivers as you're out there.
All right. Administrator Naval?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I want to give a quick update on the Stranded Act, which has been a long time in the works, but we are still working with Congress, federal Congress, to get a bill passed for basically being a nuclear storage site for all the spent fuel down by the lake after the decommissioning. COVID put a big drag on that and a lot of other, there was a lot of other priorities from Congress to try and address that as well that they had to deal with, whether it's emergency response, stimulus bills, infrastructure bills, et cetera. But we've continued to push this bill forward, try and get support. Had a meeting with Representative Schneider, and he said one of the big challenges that the House is having in getting, getting people on board with this is they're just not hearing from the constituents. Basically, you need to light a fire under elected officials before they'll take notice of an issue. We, staff has been contacting all the communities that have the same issue, either nuclear power plants decommissioned or current, currently in operations that will be decommissioned, to let them know this is out there and that they need to reach out to their elected officials and light a fire. But as everyone that's here or anyone watching, obviously you have interest in local government. I ask that you reach out to Senator Duckworth and Representative Schneider and let them know that the Stranded Act for compensation for being a spent nuclear storage site is crucial to the future of Zion and that they need to pay attention to this. The more people we have calling them, contacting them about this, the more attention they'll pay. So I just request that residents can take part in improving the future of this community by reaching out. It does not fall on deaf ears to them.
Is there information, though, where to reach out?
I was probably going to put something on the website, but on the, I don't know, it's the ZB Quarterly or whatever, the, there is an article in there that provides contact information for both Senator and Representative.
All right. Thank you, Administrator Naval.
Thank you.
Any of our, Commissioner McDowell, any comments this evening? Commissioner Frierson? Commissioner Fisher?
Just a reminder, if you haven't gotten your vaccine booster, get your vaccine booster. I got mine very recently, and so my arm is still sore. But other than that, no issues. So just a friendly reminder, you know, we're still dealing with a number of variants, and if we want to get out of this, we need to take that vaccine seriously and take care of each other. So just a friendly reminder.
Commissioner Holmes?
Nothing.
In addition with the vaccines, I've had several calls from residents wondering if we provide contacts for the booster. We don't. You have to go through Walgreens or CVS to, and you can go online for those that have internet. You can go online and schedule an appointment with CVS or Walgreens. I scheduled a booster shot and I had to drive to Chicago to get it, but it was well worth it because the Zion Walgreens and the CVSs in the area were tied up for several weeks.
I got mine in Julosco, so they're doing it too. So it's very easy, it's very easy to book an appointment, so.
And it's painless?
Absolutely.
The shot was?
Until later.
The only, just a couple of comments before I wrap up here. I just want to comment on a couple of, I think, significant, but small things that happened with our police department. I was out at Walgreens one day, and I saw a couple of our patrol officers, Officer Limone and Officer Aguilar, that they had picked up a senior citizen on one of the freezing cold days. It was a disabled citizen, and they were helping that, they put that person in their squad car, took them to Walgreens, and helped them in the store. And in this day and time over the last several years with the civil unrest, we rarely ever see the positive things that our police officers do within our community. And I did call both officers, or as I saw them there at the scene, and just thanked them for that small act of kindness. I also want to say that for our seniors in the community, there are several options for people that have disabilities to be able to get rides. There's a one-day notice with pace dial a ride. That number is 800-201-6446. There's also RTA Senior Ride Free for 65 and older residents in Lake County with disabilities, and they must be enrolled in the Department of Aging Benefit Access Program. And if they are not, they can be enrolled through the Zion Township Office, which is 847-872-2800. And then there's Elder Care. The number is 847-406-4683. They are free service for adults over 65 in Northern Lake County. So for residents that are in need of transportation, if you have disabilities, you can go onto the Zion Township website and look up those numbers and get a ride. They give you a ride to doctor's appointments, shopping, visit to relatives, and things of that nature, so that you don't have to brave the elements as one of the gentlemen that was out trying to cross our street was in a wheelchair in the midst of a snowstorm. So please, if you can just take the time to use those services, that would be great. The other item I'd like to mention is one of our officers, Brian Barber, was commended by one of our citizens who he had helped in a car accident. He had called the, this gentleman had called the police station just to talk to Officer Barber about how impressed he was with his patience and calm in helping him keep assured during this traffic accident. But he called back also to say that he had met Officer Barber, Brian Barber, while he was out walking his dogs, and those two gentlemen had developed a relationship through non-enforcement engagement. So our officers are doing things in our community to get connected to our residents. Again, I'd just like Again, I'd just like to call attention to those very small things to let you know that as city officials and all the people in different departments, whether it's the building department, Public Works, our police, and our fire, all our employees at city halls, we try to build relationships with our citizens to be able to help them. Item number nine is announcements on February 15th, a day after Valentine's Day. We have a 6:00 p.m. Zion Township Board Meeting, and at 7:00 p.m. Zion City Council Meeting, that's February 15th, and on March 1st, 7:00 p.m. of a Zion City Council Meeting. Item 10, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Holmes and Fryerson. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank everyone for coming out and drive safely and help your neighbors that are elderly if we have a lot of snow. As Chief Street talked about, let's do our partner neighborhoods with cleaning out those hydrants, cleaning away those fire hydrants, because if there's a fire and your house is involved, you don't want them to spend five minutes shoveling the hydrant. So, have a good evening, everyone.